Good evening. This is the March 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. I would like to begin this evening by reminding everybody of the position that the board took back in September with regards to mask use at board meetings, which was that the mask use requirements at board meetings would be consistent with mask use requirements in school, and therefore masks are optional at board meetings as well as in schools at this point in time. All right. Now, I would like to move on to acknowledgement of service of two of our board members for whom this is their last board meeting on this side of the table, at least for now.
Yay!
Tom Newkirk. Tom, you've been the sort of the master clock of the board for the last 10 years, most of the last 10 years at least. You and I have very different backgrounds, and I'm always learning from the perspective that you bring, and I admire the connection that you've always had to the curriculum and the pedagogy in the district, and we will clearly miss that background on the board.
Thank you, Mike.
And Al, you know, there's a number of areas where your leadership has been instrumental over the last 10 years. I think that three that really stick out for me are your involvement in our budgeting process, your commitment to wellness and sustainability, and your commitment to the district staff through the negotiations work that you've been doing for most of those years. So, thank you very much. On behalf of the district, I would like to present a small token of appreciation to each of you.
Thank you.
And I would like to open up to the other rest of the board for other comments if you'd like.
Thank you.
Denise?
So, I just, oh my gosh, I hope I don't cry. Seriously, I feel like it's kind of an end of an era. You two came in at an extremely challenging time for the district, and you hit the ground running and did not waste any time at all, you know, helping to put this district on a forward path, and we just owe you such a debt of gratitude for that. And a lot of what I was going to say, Michael just said, you know, Al, your work on the finance committee and with the budget always, you know, made sure that we were meeting the needs of the district while also, you know, keeping that fiscal goal in mind. And, you know, you really did a lot. When you look at where we are in terms of how we've been able to manage these challenging times, and Tom, all your years of chair and leading us through so many challenging discussions about football, cell phone, start time, probably some you'd rather forget, and then, of course, COVID, and, you know, you kind of let us, you know, have this discussion and back and forth, and then you'd always kind of weigh in at the end and kind of like just reset us. And just thank you both, both of you, and I hope we'll see you at some point kind of, you know, out there somewhere or whatever, but thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, Denise.
Brian. Both of you have been here since I was appointed over five and a half years ago, I think. Because I came in mid-year when I was appointed here, and I've always been next to Al since the day I got here, so he's been the one kicking me under the table. You can see it now, but usually we have a thing here that, you know, when I start getting off track and he starts kicking me saying, you know, hey, you know, brings me back in, kind of reels me back in, and I appreciate that. And again, working on the finance committee has always been enjoyable with you because even though the three of us may disagree on something, we always somehow end up in the same place. And that's always been a good thing because we all believe in, you know, how the saying goes, you know, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. You know, we obviously value the education of those children, and it shows in our budget. So, thank you, I appreciate that, and, you know, the ability of me to, when I was new, I'd always reach out to you for questions, and you'd always kind of steer me in the right direction until I kind of got my sea legs going, and you probably let me go too early, but I got out of control, but thank you, I appreciate that. And then, Tom, you were the first person to call me when I got on the board, and you really welcomed me, and you've guided me, not just the board, but you guided me to how I can be a better board member, and every time I've called you for advice, you've given me the great advice, even if it was against what I was thinking or what I was looking to do, you'd always be upfront with me and say, yeah, that's not going to work, or this is how you can do it, or, you know, maybe not the way you should do it, but I appreciate that. You've become, you know, you've become not only just a kind of a mentor to me here on the board, but a good friend, too, and I really, really appreciate everything you've done and the guidance you've given us, and because you really have gone through some, not only when you first got here, but the issues we've had to deal with since I've been here have been pretty tough, too, and I'll never forget what you did. And most of all, I think I appreciate your idea to bring up, to start the Go Vote ORMS group, to get the word out so we can get the middle school, how people educated in the middle school, the needs and how much it costs, how we're going to handle the tax rate and everything like that, and getting that information out, I think was one of the greatest ideas that you ever came up with because I don't think we would have got 76% support without your leadership and guidance through that. So, I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
So, Tom and Al, I concur with everything that's been said already. You know, one of the, I just want to highlight one of the things that I think took me a couple of years to appreciate frankly on the board is that, you know, the culture of thoughtfulness, intelligence, you know, carefully considering things, and just, you know, the board's ability to function in a positive way. I think we owe so much of that to both of you, and I'm just going to really miss serving with both of you. You know, excited to stay in touch and hear what's next, and I hope you'll come and bug us with public comment once in a while.
Jim?
So, both of these gentlemen have been here for as long as I have, and, you know, when Al first announced that he was not going to run again, I was devastated because I would miss all of his stories about the Yankees, I mean, Red Sox. And, you know, surprisingly with Tom, with his incredible intelligence and his background in literature, the thing that I will miss the most is his conversations about sports as well, because he's a real sports fan. But the thing that I will miss the most about both of you is you always put the students of this district first in every single decision. It was always about how does this benefit the students, how do we support the staff in making sure they can do the best job they can? And, you know, the greatest compliment I could give both of you were that you were student advocates all the time, whether we were talking about rubbish, or a late start, or what have you, it was how does this work best for Oyster River children? And so for that, I think I thank you the most. And on a personal level, of course, I thank you for all the support you provided me. When Denise talked about Tom's tenure as chair, and Michael now knows this, the relationship between the superintendent and the chair is critically important for the operation of the board and the district. And, Tom, you challenged me and you made me refine my positions, and it helped me grow, even with my 36 years coming in. I've grown as a superintendent because you were the chair for all of that time, and for that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, our next item of business is the approval of the agenda. I would like to, and I share this with Jim, we'll hold off on action on the tennis court and air handlers until after the budget is approved, should the budget be approved. So, I'm asking that those not be included tonight. So, with that, I'll move approval of the agenda minus those two items. Second from Brian, other changes? Discussion? All is in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor, the agenda is approved. All right, and that brings us to public comment. We have three people signed up for public comment this evening, so we will have three minutes each, and our first speaker is Kara Sullivan.
Hi. I'm so glad I was here tonight to wish Al and Tom good luck in the future and thank you for your service. But I'm here tonight to thank you for supporting the football cooperative between Oyster River High School and Portsmouth High School. This year marks the first graduating class of seniors who had the opportunity to play football for four years. I do not speak on behalf of any parent group, but I know I speak for many who appreciate the opportunity given to our athletes. A special thank you and recognition to Krista and Jeff Butts, who were so instrumental in establishing this cooperative, Andy Lathrop for his support. Thank you to Dr. Morse, Brian Sisneros, and Tom Newkirk for actually coming to games, which was wonderful to see your faces there. During the 2021 football season, 24 Oyster River players participated in the football cooperative. This included six seniors, Silas Garland, Joseph Sigmund, Julian Severance, Cole Spiers, Keegan Tillinghast, and Ethan Yu. This group of seniors has been very successful and deserve our congratulations. They were the first group of freshmen to integrate onto their team, and they made an impact. Each senior was celebrated by the Portsmouth High School coaches at our banquet in November, all receiving high praise for their athletic ability, work ethic, camaraderie, and commitment to the team. Our Oyster River players excelled, and they would not have been given this opportunity if you, our school board, had not voted for this cooperative. My statement is not about awards, but it is about giving our athletes an opportunity to play a game they love. However, I do think we often look at data to determine whether a program is working or not. So, I will give you some statistics. One Oyster River player made all-conference honors, and two of our players made honorable mention all-conference honors. Two players received awards from our coaches and players, and one Oyster River player, our first ever, made the Chad All-Star team. As a parent, teacher, and member of the football boosters, I have been fortunate to see the cooperative through a variety of lenses, and it works. However, it is not without sacrifice. As you know, our players pay to play, and they provide their own transportation to and from practices six days a week. As a parent of a senior, I know the sacrifices well, and I would not change my son's experience at all. But this is a sacrifice that many families cannot make. I want to thank you all for providing our athletes this opportunity to play, and I hope that in the future, we can expand the cooperative. Thank you.
Thank you. And Darren Keller.
Good evening, Darren Keller, Lee. For both current and potentially future board members, I'd recommend that you guys look at SAU 70's policies, that's Hanover, basically Dartmouth Territory. Many of their board policies are more comprehensive than ours, they're not, at least from my looking around at comparable districts, a lot of ours, best I can tell, appear to be somewhat boilerplate, probably from New Hampshire Municipal. Quite a few of their policies are much more in-depth as a taxpayer, probably more palatable to more people, and one of those is in our procurement process, I was alarmed to watch how Civil Works, working through Jim Riznick, was the one who handpicked a contractor. In fact, when he inquired about it, he goes, I'll contact McKenna. So, we have a third party going and getting a quote, and then it's going through a single point of failure in Jim Riznick, and this is not to point fingers at him, but we should never have a single point of failure anywhere in the process. I can tell you, in industry, we would never do procurement this way. And there was a second project when they were demolishing the courts that was also similar, where he collected them, there was no real evidence of a hard, what's supposed to be a sealed bidding process, and unfortunately, so if you look at SAU 70, they use $100,000 limit for anything that requires a bid. We appear to be using a boilerplate following federal guideline of $250,000, and surprise, surprise, that one bid that they got, instead of a competitive bid, came in magically just under $250,000. And then, if you follow on the email when I did a write-to-know request, surprise, surprise, that same vendor said, I'll keep that same price. I wonder why. So, you know, I can tell you, industry best practices, we are not doing it. I don't see a rigid process of making sure that we don't have Jim Riznick or any other vendor who could potentially be tipping somebody off, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but what I am saying is, and anybody that's been doing this for a living, I have seen it all, I do this professionally, do not be afraid to challenge it, keep people honest. I really think we need to look at our quoting process and our procurement process because I don't think that we're getting the best deal in these cases. I don't think it, I don't think our process really forces us to challenge any vendor or contractor that we're using to give us the best price. So, I really hope anybody, future or current board member, looks at that policy, clamps it down to 100. You should separate out a project manager from a finance person, let finance deal directly with the, this is how it's done in industry, let them work directly with the, let them work with the vendor on the pricing piece of it, let the project manager deal with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. And Mr. Hall, Bill Hall?
Evening. It just occurred to me, I'm the senior citizen here. I remember the first day of first grade in the old school in that southeast corner on the first floor, and that building served me very, very well. I learned to write reports, I learned math, problems of democracy with Bob Baxter and Debbie Estefor for English, it was quite an experience. And I'm glad to see that we're out of that building. It was a good building when I was there, but we certainly got our money's worth out of it, and I'm so pleased to see the new building, and we've been very fortunate with the interest on the new building, which now would be double. And I'm very, very impressed with the innovative design so that you don't have, you know, hallways that go, what, nearly a quarter thousand feet from one end to the other? Couldn't believe it. So, we've got that all in order and environmentally controlled, and I can't, the other, the last thing, I can't believe we did it during COVID perfectly matched from the week that we voted to build that school with 76% was when we started to have the COVID impact at the school. And so, Dr. Morse had to deal with COVID, and he had to deal with building a new school, and he still had to be superintendent, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. So, we have minutes from, we have regular and non-public minutes from February 2nd. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February 2nd.
With motion from Denise, second from Brian. Any changes, corrections? Yes.
So, we did receive a letter from Lauren Selig, who had had public comment at that meeting, and she did ask for a change, so I did submit that to Wendy. She, what she said she said was to move the workshop day by two days, move the October workshop day by two days, then students who were Jewish would not have to choose between attending school and observing a holiday. I think it got mixed in with the Lunar New Year or something. Anyway, that was, that was what she submitted, and I'd like to see that correction. I think that was it for that, yes.
Okay. Brian?
On page seven, under Public Comments, Section 8, I know Darren Keller's comments, it says, including how lucid it's supposed to be, I believe it was lucrative?
Lucrative.
Was the word you were using? So, just the meaning did not, wasn't good in context. And the next, and the second paragraph on that, very minor, Lauren Selig spells her name, I believe L-O-R-E-N, if I'm not mistaken, rather than the common spelling of L-A-U-R-E-N, so.
Thank you. Others? All right, with those corrections, all those in favor of the regular minutes for February 2nd? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved. We've also got the non-public minutes. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of February 2nd.
With motion, second from Brian, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening, David Goldsmith, principal of Moheramit. Nice to see you all. When I spoke to you in February, I told you that we were getting ready to tap our trees and start our maple sugaring for the year. We successfully did that before break. We had a really good run over vacation as well. A number of teachers and families collected over 200 gallons over February break, and then the weather did us in, and so we continuously learn how much the weather controls our sugaring work, and so we started to get some sap flowing again today. I will keep you up to date minute to minute with the sap flowings going on at Moheramit. It's very exciting. So, our kids are really excited about getting to do that, and even when they get out and see that their buckets are frozen, it's part of the learning process, and it's part of what it means to be a maple sugaring farmer in New England. So, it's all, it's all part of the learning, which is really great. Of course, we came back from vacation, and our transition went very well with masks being optional. I'm sure that's on everyone's mind. We talked about it in all of our classrooms, I spoke about it over the announcements in the morning, Mr. Klein might have heard them. We just talked about how we're all in a new phase, and we're all trying to figure out how we feel about this and what to do, and that some people are very, were very excited from the get-go to take their masks off, and some people were absolutely not going to take their masks off, and then everywhere in between. I talked about myself having to make those decisions, and I'm, I know that kids in classes were talking to their teachers about the same thing, so we've continued to just work together as a community as we always do. I'm aware that people have been very respectful in the buildings around any of those decisions, and we've had some good conversations about it. Otherwise, it was a very normal transition back. I will say that students were really excited to see people's faces, even students who were, who have continued to mask were commenting on how cool it was to see other people's faces and vice versa. So, it's definitely changed the tenor of our building a little bit, and that's where we are with that. Questions, comments? Ms. Day?
I'm just wondering if you've had any issues in terms of parents who say, I want my child to keep their mask on, but the child isn't wearing, you know, and how is that being handled if that is coming?
That's a great question, Denise. We were talking about that even in the fall when we had, when we opened up with mask optional for outside, and it was the same sort of thing. And as far as I know so far, families who have requested that, you know, their child wear a mask for the full day have been doing that, and when there is an issue, that's usually just a conversation between the teacher and the family, and they talk through either how the child is feeling or what's been going on, and the family makes a decision, and we support clearly any of those decisions. So, I'm not aware of there being any issues around it, just positive conversations around what's happening.
Can I add, David, to your response? I'm Denise. So, you know, we're respecting the decision of the parents, but we don't have the capacity to, we'll just say, Michael as a dad says to his, to his boys, I want you to wear your mask at school, and, you know, at some point during the day, they take them off. We don't have the capacity to, you know, follow 2,000 students and whether their mask's on or mask off, we're respecting the choice of the parents, and we're, and we're just counting on the children to do as their parents have asked them to do.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
What do you think Mr. Richard's going to talk about?
I can't imagine.
Wow, really. What a, what a first day on Monday. Gratitude, lucky, pinch myself, really. It's still really hard for me to believe when I walk through that school facility that this is real and that my students and staff are able to be in there. It's wonderful. So, again, nothing but gratitude and appreciation to all of you, school board members, as well as this entire school community, and of course, Dr. Morse, who started that process, creating a middle school study back in 2014. So, it's been a wonderful journey. Again, Jay Richard, the principal, what I consider the luckiest principal around, and also what I consider the nicest, nicest middle school around. I do want to thank the school board for those three days right prior to the February break. My staff worked extremely hard, so they were ready to roll for that first day of school. Last week, we had a community open house in the morning and also in the afternoon. What a joy that was for me because the people that came in were not your typical community members, meaning parents, so it was a lot of fun. I had several people express, I just want to see what my tax dollars are paying for, and they left saying things like, I wish I could come back to school. This was worth every cent of my tax dollars. That's not something I typically hear as, you know, a school, you know, as a school principal, as well as I think that's important for you to hear, people were extremely impressed with the building. We also are continuing our open viewings. Last night, we had fifth grade and eighth grade parents in, it's more of the same, nothing but smiling faces, and tomorrow night, we host sixth grade and seventh grade parents with their students. So, it's something just really exciting to participate in and see people's initial I want to talk a little bit about our robotics program. Last week was the state championship, so there's 22 teams who qualify for the New Hampshire state championship. Out of those 22 teams, we had six teams qualify for that. In the top 10, we had five out of the top 10 teams, as well as the first-place team. We have three teams who are going to the world championships in May, that's actually in Dallas, Texas, and I want to highlight, we have this wonderful new robotics room in the new school where the kids are thrilled, and I also want to give special thanks to our two coaches. They've been coaching for eight years, they've really made the program go through the roof in terms of success. That's John Severio and Jason Duff. If there was a robotics Hall of Fame in New Hampshire, they would definitely be members of that in terms of coaches. I also want to thank Jason Duff because he has a strong connection to Rocky Coast Printing, they do t-shirts, but he actually got the majority of boxes for free for us when we were moving from the old school into the new school, and as Jim Rosicky said, it saved us thousands of dollars. So, what a huge assistance from that group. I also want to thank Alan Tom for their dedicated service. Words can't properly express what you've done for our students and our school community and for myself personally. I guess the gratitude I have for helping me become a better principal, really, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal of Oyster River High School. For our opening day, coming back with the protocol changes, I would say it's pretty much what David said, we have a 50-50 or 60-40 with kids wearing masks, not wearing masks. The interesting thing, we had some kiddos who had masks on Monday, who didn't wear them Tuesday, Wednesday, but some of our kids who were unmasked on Monday decided to wear them on Tuesday and Wednesday. So, it's just, I think they're kind of feeling it out and seeing what works for them and just experiencing that as we go through the week to see what it is they prefer. We had about 60 seniors that went to the old middle school the week before break to go in and just visit their old classrooms, visit their old teachers, take some memorabilia with them, then some clocks, some ceiling tiles, some things that were going to be demolished, but they, they were really happy to be able to have that time. I got a couple pictures of some seniors who will find their signature that they signed in eighth grade on the wall, so just to be able to take those last snapshots, so I just know they really enjoyed that. Olivia's going to talk about our event for tomorrow night. Just a couple reminders, on Tuesday of next week, we are remote in the high school. All the teachers will be in the building, but that's for the elections because we have lunch in the NPR. On March 16th and 17th, we have the SAS science testing, and on March 23rd, we have the SAT and PSA. All the teachers will be in the building, but that's for the elections because we have lunch in the NPR. On March 16th and 17th, we have the SAS science testing, and on March 23rd, we have the SAT and PSAT testing. And then the week before break, our MOR edition came out, the second edition, so that's out now. So any questions? Thank you.
All right, and from the board, Denise?
Two things. First of all, I listened to the candidate forum that was sponsored by the middle school PTO and was greatly reassuring because I feel like whoever ends up, you know, winning the election, we're going to be in good hands on the board. One of the questions that came up had to do with how to increase the number of students participating in the CTE programs, the career technical programs at the high schools, the area high schools. And one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, the role that our school counselors play, and certainly they do play an important role. But I also wanted to mention that it's really important for parents, you know, to talk to their children about those options. You know, particularly these days, all of those jobs, I mean, they're just, you know, begging for people. I mean, the jobs are out there, whether it's in the construction trades, the health technical fields, early childhood education, you know, all of those programs that are offered at the career technical, through the career technical programs. So just something to keep in mind. And the other thing I wanted to do is to commend the middle school building committee because you folks, and again, that obviously led by Dr. Morris, but including Tom and certainly Mr. Richard, you know, the hard work that, and Brian, my goodness, I can't forget Brian. I knew there was somebody else. So Brian and Tom were our two board reps on the committee, and you just did so much work, and, you know, the result is amazing. So thank you very much for all the hours. I don't actually know all the other folks who served on the committee, but, you know, you should be really proud because it's just an absolutely amazing facility. I actually went to the community event in the morning and in the afternoon because I just had so much fun checking out all the little corners and everything.
You see?
In visiting the new middle school, I asked one of the students who was masked if he felt pressure to be unmasked. And the principals each spoke to sort of what this, tonight, to what this transition has been. And with the middle school, it's really interesting because the first day in the middle school was also the first day of the mask optional policy. So I was curious. And he was so wise. He just, it was actually one of the robotics kids going to Dallas. And he said, "You know, I feel a little bit of pressure, but I think if I were wearing, if I were not wearing a mask, I'd feel pressure to stay masked." It's just, you know, we're kids. We look at what each other are doing, and we sort of feel like maybe we should be doing that instead. So I thought that really caused me to pause and think that this is just a really hard time for everyone still. And because of the coincidence of that, on one hand, there's tremendous relief because the new middle school has such better ventilation. So if it was going to happen, thank goodness we were in that space. But also just recognizing as pleased and proud and happy as we all are about the new school, it is still, you know, we're not expecting all the kids to have transitioned without hiccups and just kind of acknowledging that. I did want to draw, follow on what Denise said, talking about the elections. You know, when I was appointed, the only reason I put my name forward was because it wasn't an election. And I think there were 15 other people who felt similarly in doing that. Since then, there's always been contested elections. And it's tricky because the district, historically, as I understand it, has stayed neutral, does not want to be impartial, and that is totally appropriate, and has relied on related organizations, the PTOs in a rotating sequence, and the Teachers Guild, and others who might, journalists who might interview the candidates, and has not posted on the website, for example. And unfortunately, in contested elections, this leads to information gaps. We miss big constituents. We miss those that aren't on social media. We miss those that don't have school-aged children, and so we're not receiving the communications from the district. It relies a lot on those outside groups to sort of follow what the community might expect or the community might need. And we know that the PTO forum, such quality questions and quality answers, and the audio quality is difficult. And those that weren't able to attend or might be dropping in later have a hard time actually hearing the candidates. And this leads to, number one, voters not being able to make informed decisions, and therefore presumably lower quality of school board members, possibly, but also a perception of district communication that in this case technically isn't our fault, but I still think that we should do something about it. And I know Dr. Morris, this has been confusing, right? Because you sort of, we need to stay impartial. It is absolutely appropriate that we do. And yet perhaps we have more of an obligation to communicate at least who the candidates are in their bios than we have in the past. The Dura model of putting up the brief bio and photo of each candidate, I think is fabulous. And I'm so glad, Dr. Morris, that we were able to do that for the five candidates this year. And the town updates remain a great way for others, such as the Oyster River Equity and Justice Group, the Teachers Guild, Fosters, other interviews of candidates that wouldn't be appropriate for a district website but should still get out to the candidates. So I guess I wanted to say, first of all, thank you, Dr. Morris, for helping close this communication gap by putting the bios on the website. And I hope that as a board, we can readdress this in a couple of weeks to give you clearer direction in what the board would, what role, if any, the board would ask the district to play in communication around election candidates.
I didn't want to leave the role on the board without saying thank you to my fellow board members. I've truly enjoyed the 10 years, not every minute of it, but truly enjoyed. I've enjoyed, appreciated the work of the community supporting our schools. I've appreciated the trusting relationship we have with the leaders of the various departments and the principals, the trust we have. And I got to admit that I didn't always follow all the lease agreements with technology. I didn't take all that in, but we trusted that all that would be done well, so we're well-served by the directors. But I think working with the board has been just great. I think the way we work through difficult problems, the way we come into meetings, you know, I would come in with some idea of how we should go, and then somebody would say something. We'd listen to each other, come to consensus. When we didn't come to consensus, we disagreed amicably and went on and did our business. And I think that over that 10 years, we've accomplished a lot, and I think I really appreciate it. Just not just collegiship, but actual friendship that we formed. So that's been really important to me. And I can't leave without saying, what a privilege, what a lucky chance I had to work with Dr. Morris. You know, and I think the public sees in these meetings, and it's his kindness, his commitment to the district, his vision. But I think when we go into, I'd go into, talk with you on agenda meetings, there'd be some problem. And I just had such trust in your judgment, how you would see through a problem that I think could have blown up or could have been serious, and how you just logically helped us work through it. And I think what you did was you taught us how to be a good board. And I think a board is only as good as its relationship to the superintendent. So I think that I just, you know, I don't know, you know, I just have to stop, but just to say thanks so much for your leadership, and I certainly appreciate it personally and professionally.
Thank you, Joe.
So, I mean, it's kind of interesting, you know, as I look out at the candidates that are sitting out there. You know, 10 years ago, there weren't a lot of people rushing to sign up to get on the Oyster River school board. I mean, it's easy to forget, especially in a time right now where we have so much chaos going on outside of our schools, that we had so much chaos going on inside of our schools. And it really was a challenge initially because sitting at this table wasn't the greatest place to bring up new ideas and share them. And I think over the course of the 10 years, what the board really has become is a stabilizing force in the district where we've allowed ideas. I know many of you have had to come up to that podium and give your ideas, but I think we've tried to provide an opportunity for you to share your ideas, to share where you think the district could go. And then we sat down and thought about how we could pay for it. And so I think it's really created a stable place where we can share ideas and grow, just like what we want to have happen in our classrooms. And so I think we've modeled that. And so it's been very gratifying to see that we had that base. And I think that's what really helped us make it through the last year of COVID. I cannot express how impressed I am with all of the staff members and students of what they've accomplished over the last two years. And I think it's extremely exciting, the future that you guys have ahead of you. So again, thank you again to everyone I had a chance to work with.
Right.
Going along the, I'd give you more kudos, Tom, and I've already given it to you, so move on. But the, as we're talking about the middle school, it was really, really special to be there on Monday and see the kids come in. It was just such a great atmosphere. I know we had a couple of people who tried to rein in our parade, but it didn't really matter because it really was a special day. Because if you think about it, we have our election next week. Two years ago, we voted for that school, and here we are, we're already in it. And we came in on time, on budget, and all with COVID in between. So if anything could have went wrong, it didn't. And, you know, the only problems we ran into were so minor that it didn't really affect anything. And the interest rates we got were half what we originally planned on. It just really, really worked out good. But last week, we were able to go in there for a special luncheon with the staff and got to hear the piano played for the first time by one of our 7th graders, and it was absolutely incredible. The sound in that, not just the sound quality in that music hall, but the playing ability of that student was phenomenal. And funny story, as I'm meeting Jim and I were in yesterday, I think Mr. Sullivan, I believe, asked him, you know, "Is that the nicest piano you've ever played?" You know, "That's a nice brand-new piano." He said, "Well, I've played a piano with Carnegie Hall before, so it might not be the nicest." And I'm like, "All right, second nicest," you know, and so it's actually a pretty funny story. I mean, or he was phenomenal to watch play and listen to him. It was great. But in my effort to spend my last quality time with Tom, we took a walk around the building that day and just to see the classrooms and talk to the teachers. And the reaction from the teachers there was, they were just so grateful for, you know, the new building and how they set, even though every room was designed exactly the same, they individualized them to the point where none of them looked the same. And that was great because they put their own personality in there. And it was just to go in there and talk to them, and you could see them still looking around like, "I want to do this, I want to do that, I want to move this." And the desks we got, you can do so much with, and you can change it in a matter of minutes or seconds even. It was, and we got some hugs from some teachers that were just so grateful for what they could do. And I actually asked someone, like, "You're going to miss the old school? Are you emotionally attached?" They were like, "No, can't wait for that thing to go." And so, so that was wonderful. Another thing that was actually pretty cool that we were able to do was, because we have such great relationships with the towns and the district, that we actually had the town of Lee bring over a dumpster. And we used all the cardboard that all, everything came in for the furniture and put that in the dumpster for the town of Lee to recycle and make some money on. So I believe they're making, I think it was around $125, $130 a ton at the time. So it was great that we could, rather than it just go to waste, not only does it help us with our lead certifications, because the recycling was a big part of it, but we're able to work really, it just really exemplifies the relationship we have with the towns and the district, how we all work together for the common good. So another, a lot of the questions we had before the opening was, how do we drop our kids off? That was a big question. So big thanks to the district parent, Pete Harmon, and his son, who's a sophomore here at the high school, Matt Harmon, who took their drone out and did the old drive-through and showed everybody how it's done. And it was actually pretty cool and very informative for the people that were concerned on what was going to happen on the first day. And from what I understand, the traffic flowed pretty well, and we had police out there, crossing guards and everything. And we were still working out some kinks, but I think that was working out. So I wanted to thank them. And of course, I wanted to thank Tom for his, you know, for a couple of years ago, you, for some reason, you trusted me to be on the building committee. And why, at the time, I didn't know why, but I'm glad you did because it was probably one of the greatest experiences I've ever had in this district. And you obviously saw something in me that I didn't see. And I really took a passion to this middle school and worked extremely hard to get that done and support it and go out and talk about it and bring everybody together, regardless of what our backgrounds were. We could all get together and agree that it was a wise investment for the district. And it was just as much of a surprise to me as it was to everyone else, we got 76%. I was really thinking it was going to be about 61. And when it's 76, I was so excited. I remember some of us were there at the election, and we were just like sides ourselves. So, so thank you, Tom. I really appreciate that opportunity, and it's something I'll never forget. Lastly, I know you were talking about forums before. Just an idea for the future, just to make it flow better, I think, for these candidate forums is maybe if we kind of get maybe a subcommittee together of all the PTOs and maybe a member from the board, one that is not up for election, to be involved in that process, not only to get the questions together, but utilize every asset in the district so we don't have like the sound issues we had this year, everything else. We can make sure everyone's kind of involved and all bases are covered because it is a lot for a volunteer organization to do. And it's a lot in a short period of time. So I think if we get a group together, we could probably start that process a little bit earlier, maybe meet once a month, you know, and just after a few months, kind of get that together and then kind of put it all together. So that might, just a thought for the future, if we can do some type of subcommittee like that and just bring everyone, rather than just hand it over to each PTO, just have them all work together with a board member, maybe on that committee, or two board members, or whatever, whatever works. Not too many people, but to make that a little more efficient. And not to take anything away from the way it was done this year, I just think, you know, looking at it over the last few years, you put it all together, I think if we all put our assets together at one place, I think it might be a little more efficient, might flow a little bit better. So that was my thought.
So on the subject of preparing for the election and getting information out, I did suggest to Dr. Morris that that's something that we should take up in, you know, when we're a little bit more removed from the election, so in the May-June timeframe. I think that, you know, a number of the things that Brian talked about are worth taking up. And really, I think the value is to make it predictable so that everybody knows what to expect from the district or from other sources when it comes to how that information's going to get out to the community. Mr. Richard, I've got good news and bad news. The bad news is, we didn't open a new school this week. The good news is, a building doesn't make a school. Teachers, paras, custodians, school nutrition, school health, administration, did I say teachers? Teachers, coaches, students, families, that's what makes a school. So we moved to school. We moved to school in a very short amount of time. And my biggest hope for the new building is that what it really does for us is it enables everything that that school community does, that that school does, to be better because it's easier. That all of the deficiencies, all the challenges, the time that it took to get from here to there, dealing with questionable plumbing, what's going to work, what's not going to work, which room's going to be hot and cold today, do I have, am I elbow to elbow, or am I way across the room with horrible acoustics? That we put those things behind us and that everybody who's working in that school, teaching, learning, doing, has an easier time of it and gets more done because of it. So thank you and good luck. Anything else? All right. That brings us to district reports. Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that we will be having a summer REACH program. Some information went out over vacation about that. We're very excited to be continuing our work with the Durham Parks and Rec. So a flyer went out, just giving some basic information. We will send that again next week. And then we will be opening registration on the 18th of March. And the REACH program will be, again, as it has been in the past, will be both morning and afternoon. We'll work with the Durham Parks and Rec department and Rachel Gazowski to make an afternoon program that abuts our morning program. And then she will also have the Friday. program. And then she will also have the Friday field trips as well. So we're really excited about it. And I really appreciate Reagan Spinney and Rachel Gazowski working with me to make that possible. I also would like to let the school board know that the plans for the March 18th Teacher Workshop Day, they, you know, we've been planning four months and they're starting to take shape. We're very excited. We have a variety of different things happening at the different buildings. All of them are connected in some way to the strategic plans. So within the elementary school, K through five, we have literacy work that's going to be happening and some collaborative work with grade level teams. And then at the middle school, there will be some technology and getting to know the building, some work done there. And then at the high school, there's a variety of different professional opportunities. And some of these opportunities will include opportunities for DEIJ faculty are interested. So there's a variety of different things going on. And I'll have some more, and principals will have some more information at the next school board meeting. So, thank you.
When did you say the details for the REACH camps would go out?
That's going to, registration is going out on the 18th of March, and it'll be open for a couple of weeks. And it's Monday through Friday. We've kept the costs similar to last year for $120 per week for student. And that includes lunch as well. It will be at Masked Way.
So Suzanne may just come in behind that. So registration for the REACH program, it fills very, very quickly, almost overnight. Parents are pushing the button the minute it's opened. So I would recommend we do multiple notices so that nobody gets caught short. I also just want to remind everybody, the REACH program is a self-sustaining program that does not, is not supported by tax dollars. It's supported by the participants who enroll. And their enrollment fees pay for the instruction. This has been an incredible program for the district. It is about eight years old now. And it started slow, but the minute we hitched horses with the Town of Durham's Recreation Program, it just went off the charts. So it's an exciting program. It's an exciting opportunity. It's cost reasonable for parents. And so we need to make sure that they have multiple opportunities between now and the 18th and know it's coming.
Suzanne, are all of the classes listed now? I know last year they came out in stages.
We will have, as far as opportunities for students...
In terms of naming the classes, yes.
Yep. That will be on the 18th, we will have it all listed out. So all of the opportunities will be listed when parents go to register. We don't have, we're waiting for the final details from the instructors to be able to put that together.
Will parents have a few days before the 18th in order to decide what they're going to register so quickly?
We hope so, yes. Yeah, we would hope that we would have all of that. Again, we're wait, once we have all that information from the instructors, and we work with Durham Parks and Rec to be able to put that together. The registration is with their help. So it's an online registration. So some of it has to do with just communication and timing. So we hope that we would be able to do that.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Back for my five minutes of fame each meeting to go over the metrics. I provided a copy for all of you. And what you can see here is, we're starting to see some shifts in primarily the areas of percent positive transmission rate ICU capacity. So starting with, right at the top, we still are in substantial transmission for new cases per 100,000. Remember, anything greater than 100 is substantial. We're at 402.7 as of this week. That has come down significantly. You saw numbers in the thousands just a few short weeks ago. We've moved to the moderate area in terms of percent positive, 9%. We want to get below 5 to be in that minimal transmission. And then transmission rate is actually in the minimal. So we're in the green at a .94. Anything less than 1% is minimal. Our ICU capacity is coming down. This was a significant concern for the state and our hospitals. We were way high for weeks in that substantial area. And now we're in the moderate area at 71%. Once we get below 70%, we'll actually be back to minimal. So we're getting very close. Our staffing capacity has been sufficient, as well as our local contact tracing. I just want to talk for a second about the contact tracing. The state no longer requires this. So they had stopped supporting us in this, in these efforts, you know, at the beginning of the school year. We continued to do contact tracing. The state no longer requires it. They've changed the reporting guidelines for schools. There's a new process for reporting that. That's primarily, I think and believe, it's because of home tests being so widely available. So a lot of this data is underreported, as we know, because you're not required to report your home test anymore. The only people who have to report those tests are us, of course, hospitals, testing centers, those kinds of things. So we do do some contact tracing, meaning if we find out someone's positive and we understand they were with somebody in their household, outside their household, we have conversations, but we are not digging at the classroom level. That is not something the state wants us to do. And also, they're not looking at clusters and outbreaks anymore. So they used to collect that data to identify when you were at a cluster or an outbreak. They no longer want that data. You know, I was going to share, Megan Harvey had provided us with some really great visuals this week, actually just today, with the new CDC guidelines and changes. If we had not been moved to mask optional by the governor, it would have given us as a community some really good visuals, as well as guidelines for us to move to mask optional. So they're actually pretty great, but that changed with the governor. So some of our local data that I think is becoming more important to us as we look at how the virus is impacting our community. I still continue to collect the data on how many staff and students are positive, how many are in quarantine, and how many are tested by our school nurses. So as of yesterday at Masked Way, we had zero positive. We had five in quarantine and we only tested one. At MoHerramitt was one positive, three in quarantine and one tested. At the middle school, we had no positive. I think that's the first time in months. Middle school, one in quarantine and zero tested. At the high school, we have two positive, three in quarantine, and four were tested. Those numbers are significantly dropped. Right before break, about a week and a half before break, we were at about 82, 85 positive at the high school alone. And actually, the elementary schools were pretty high. So those numbers have come way down. The testing's coming way down. The testing's coming down because of home test kits. We also have been distributing those home test kits that I went to Concord to pick up that were provided to us. So tests are readily available to families. They're not in emergency situations anymore. Locally, our straff counting numbers, you know, they are coming down as well. Barrington was at eight cases. Dover's at 25. Durham's at 60. Lee's at five and Madbury's at one to four. UNH is at 111 as of today. So those are all dropping and have dropped significantly since, you know, two and a half, three weeks ago. So the local data is pretty important to us right now. And I think it helps as we look at our mitigation layers and what's still proving to be very effective, all the other things that we continue to have in place.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yes.
Just for the people that are watching and probably didn't read Dr. Morse's email, even though we're mask optional, our cleaning and everything else is still just as it was before.
Yes.
That hasn't changed.
Yes. All other layers of mitigation.
Some people think we wiped everything off the table, and we did not. It's just the masks went optional.
Yep. Yeah, mask optional.
We reiterated that, Brian, on Monday with the email we sent out, and today with the email I sent out, that our current mitigation practices minus masks are still in place.
That's for the people that probably aren't reading the emails.
Yeah. So if they're not reading everything, you know, the cleaning procedures are still in place. Three feet in classrooms, six feet in, when eating in cafeterias, hand hygiene, you know, all those other, you know, continuing to recommend vaccination, all that stuff is, is Dr. Morse outlined in his two memos.
I think the big change for the board to be aware of is we are beginning to walk into allowing field trips and putting conditions around them. But we're beginning to have discussions about performances, again, which we've missed for two years, and field trips. So those conversations are beginning as well.
Do we have the ability to require masks on our field trips? In terms of on the buses for our field trips?
No. No. Mask optional all the time.
The only thing we talked about is if we go on a field trip someplace where a private location is requiring it.
That would be the, yes.
That would be...
If the private operation is requiring it, then we have to honor that.
Yeah. But the, the school buses are public, are the exemption through the CDC guidelines, which were lifted on February 25th. So it's mask optional for public schools. So that's everywhere. So if we were to take transportation as a public school that was not public school transportation, that would change. But we're always on public school transportation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Dr. Morse.
So I'm going to invite Kara back up to the podium because we have timely news that we want to share with the community. And the board will appreciate this news as well as the greater O R C S D community. So Kara?
Hi. Hi again. I wanted to share that the Debate Club, for which I am the advisor, wanted to sponsor a candidate forum. So they asked permission to do that. And we've been in contact with Dr. Morse and Rebecca Noe just to try to make that happen. We've also been in touch with Olivia. So I don't know if Olivia wants to add anything during this report. Please feel free to. But it's, this is at 7 o'clock tomorrow night here. And to my knowledge, I'm working with one of my students. She is really doing such a great job, Sarah Lyon. And she has contacted all five candidates who have accepted. We've identified five topic areas to focus on during the forum. And those topic areas have been communicated to the candidates. They include DEIJ, mental health, student voice, which Olivia has been helping us with, COVID policies, and student activities. And Alexander has been wonderful to help us to set it up, and will livestream tomorrow night.
Very good.
Yes. And if...
Sure.
Oh, of course, yeah.
I did, I did read posts on Facebook that said it would be livestream, and the link would come through school messenger. But my question is, if someone in the community doesn't have school messenger, is there a way for someone, you know, other than a parent, I would assume, that could link in to hear the forum? Or to watch the forum, I guess?
I will ask Alexander to help us out with that.
So the, you'll be able to watch it the same way you're watching the meeting right now, or csc.org/stream, and click on Watch Live on YouTube, you'll be able to watch it.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder whether we could also talk with Jenny Berry or the administrators who distribute town newsletters to compile that recording, as well as other materials that other groups might have have put out, such as the Teachers Guild questionnaire, the Equity and Justice questionnaire, so that they can go out in the Friday updates. And people who might not know about the program or be able to access the link, since they're not on school messenger, would be able to see them later.
Right. I know that you had...
I reached out to Mr. Selig today to see if he would be willing to, sometimes during a snow event, he puts out a special edition. And given the timeliness of Kara's and the debate team's work, I did ask whether he would be willing to put it out tomorrow. He may have responded, but we're here, so I don't know for sure. But in terms of taking the streaming, that, once Alex has it recorded, we could submit it, just like Michael does, on School Board News and make it available. And we also can create a link to our website that all of that information is available. So we can definitely hit it on Friday, but I was kind of hoping that maybe Todd would be able to get it out tomorrow, if possible. But that's a big ask.
Right.
You didn't know you were going to be a superstar through this whole...
No, two times. And I did want to thank Olivia for helping us today. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah. No, thank you for reaching out. I thought it was, I love to be involved. And it was really great to hear all the other students, like, thoughts and how they're really into, like, interviewing these people, well, not interviewing, but hosting this forum. And I just want to say thank you for making this all possible. And thank you to the debate team for setting it up. Congrats, honestly.
And just to emphasize another point that Kara's made, is this is a student-centered exercise. This is not a public exercise. So the students will be present with the candidates asking questions, but community members are not, they can only stream if they want to want to watch it. So it's not a public event, per se. It's a debate club event.
Right. Just going off of that, Sarah had sent me a little, like, blurb of what she had. It's basically the same thing you had said, but she also included that, she said, "This forum is going to be student-led with the goal of promoting student voice in issues that affect their education." So this is a great summary of it, that.
Super excited that you've taken this on, and the debate team has taken this on. Kara, I know that your hope is that perhaps this might turn into an annual event.
We would love to see that. And a couple of things that were brought up tonight, I think, speak to the importance of that. So, all right, any other questions? All right.
Yeah, ask some tough questions.
I know. Well, they're developed, they're researching, their process was great. They're researching and they have very, I think, interesting questions to ask, so.
I think Al is offering to drive on them.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And a report that we've been waiting for, for months and months, and actually a little bit over a year because of the transition on the Long Range Planning Committee, Heather Smith has taken the lead in calculating all the data. And so we're super excited to see what this data shares with us, Heather. So you know, this body, as well as myself, use this every single month. So the work that you're doing, and I think this is over two decades of work by local community members to customize enrollment data specifically to O S River, is so valued by us. And so thank you for taking this on.
So I'm Heather Smith. I am Chair of the Long Range Planning Committee. On the committee is Gianna Jelsi, Eric Ickes, Katrin Casper, Kent Casper, Rob McEwen, David Taylor, and Rob Moore, and Lisa Allison, who was the chair for a long time, is working with us, donating her time as an external advisor. So the Long Range Planning Committee's goals are to provide the school board with enrollment projections for the next 10 years. We make every effort to provide projections for the following school year in the fall, when they can be used as part of the budgeting process. Every effort, but maybe not this year.
Missed it by this much.
Oh, yeah. So, and we work every year to continually improve and refine the model that we use to make these enrollment projections. And so I'm an engineer. I like to tell people where the bodies are buried, how the model works. And now you all have to suffer with me. Ha ha. All right. So kindergarten. When we project kindergarten, we use a linear regression that's a function of historical births and enrollments. We also use historical Massway and MoHerramitt splits to divide between the two schools. In first grade, we use a combination of linear regression, that's a function of birth and enrollment, as well as what we call GPRs, or grade progression ratios. We'll talk about those in a second. We also use historical splits between the two elementary schools. The rest of the grades are taken over by grade progression ratios. And the high school enrollment is calculated with and without the tuition students. All right. So of our two tools that we use, the first is regression. We calculate linear regression models, and we update those annually for both kindergarten and first grade. And we went through an exercise of trying to eliminate one of them this year and switch to grade progression ratio, and it doesn't work as well. Our current regression for this year uses 30 years of data. So we're running from 1991 to current year. And it's a function of the births from six years ago, the birth... And it's a function of the births from six years ago, the births from five years ago, kindergarten enrollment two years ago and kindergarten enrollment one year ago. The heaviest weighted of all those four pieces is the kindergarten enrollment two years ago. The current regression for first grade is a function of birth seven years ago, the kids that got into kindergarten a year late, the birth six years ago, those would be the folks that came in on time, first grade enrollment from last year and first grade enrollment from two years ago. Again, you'll notice that the most dominant weighted variable in each of those equations is the enrollment at that grade two years ago. And so this is something we've noticed historically, that enrollment is, or the, the prediction of the enrollment is highly auto-correlated. So our first, our kindergarten and first graders are calculated as a population based on the births and enrollment. And then we divide them based on historical averages between kindergarten and first grade, between Massway and Moheramit. And the current breakdown over a four-year average is that 52% of kindergarten goes to Massway and 47.8% of kindergarten goes to Moheramit. First grade, it's closer to 55% at Massway and 45% at Moheramit. This shifts year to year, so this guy moves around. You'll also notice that since we're using births, we run out of data at about five years. So we also need to estimate how the birth rate is going to look within the district and so we do that by regressing the birth rate as well and that equation is here. That is a function of the births in the previous year and the births from two years ago. So our grade progression ratio is calculated as the number of students we had last year in the previous grade. They go up to the next grade and so the grade progression ratio is the current population divided by the population last year in the previous grade, which is a mouthful, it's a little easier to see. So last year we had 147 fourth graders, this year we have 153 fifth graders. We gained about 4% in terms of population. So our grade progression ratio is 1.04. We do this every year for every single grade and then we average this over the last five years to give us a nice stable number for the grade progression ratio. The grade progression ratio incorporates net migration in and out of the district over time and by grade and there are historic trends that you'll see. We typically lose some going into high school, we gain some going into middle school. So what does this look like? So the grade progression ratios are shown here from kindergarten going into first grade all the way to 11th grade going into senior year. Massway and Moheramit are broken out separately because those two populations are calculated separately. Grade progression ratios are almost always greater than one, except for ninth through 11th grade, where we lose some of the native students in the district, but our overall enrollment tends to increase in these years due to the tuition students, which are not calculated in the calculation of the grade progression ratio. Have I lost anyone yet?
No.
You with me? All right, good. So again, I'm a modeler by trade, always like to show you how well it works and how well it doesn't. So we're going to take a little snapshot and talk about how well the 2019 progression, or hmm, the 2019 predictions came out with this year. All right, and so a couple of caveats, it's still a pandemic, we're still working through some of that, but let's check a look anyway. All right, so on the top of the table, you'll see kindergarten through 12th grade. The first block is Massway, the second block is Moheramit and the third block is middle school and high school. Let's start at the bottom block. We see that the error between the predicted enrollment in each grade and the actual enrollment in each grade, that's the gray box, runs between plus or minus 6%. Generally, that's about nine students per grade. And so overall, we're doing pretty well and that's a function of how well the grade progression ratios work. Once they're in the system, we can march them along pretty well. Massway and Moheramit, that's where our bigger variabilities lie because we are predicting kindergarten and first grade enrollments and that's relatively hard. So you'll see there are two big red flags. We're looking at Massway at fourth grade, where the prediction was almost 25% higher than what we actually had enrolled. And at Moheramit in kindergarten, where the prediction is almost 26% lower than what is actually enrolled. So if we take a look at kindergarten, and I need to thank the admins at both the elementary schools for helping me out with this, we had 110 total kindergarteners predicted and 128 were enrolled as of October 1. And that number is actually higher, but we don't capture that because we work only on an October 1 enrollment numbers. Of those 128, 12 of them were students that turned six prior to October 1, 2021, which means they should have been kindergarteners last year. That's not the model's fault, that's human factors and we do what we can with that. Four of the students are repeating kindergarten and that's a school and parent choice. So that's actually pretty consistent with the lower inspected enrollment last year for kindergarten. Kindergarten numbers were a bit lower, those 12 kids coming in this year instead of last year would have equilibrated that. At fourth grade at Massway, we estimate that should be largely pandemic-related. The grade progression ratios going from third grade to fourth grade at Massway have been pretty stable, except for the last two years where it's been dropping under one, actually under 0.95. Historically, they're closer to about a 5% gain every year and so we think that's part of the pandemic. Moheramit grade progression ratios, for some reason, have been more stable over the last few years. And again, the high school and the middle school, those predictions are fairly good and that's consistent with the stability of using the grade progression ratio approach. So now that I've told you how we calculate the things, I will now tell you the things we have calculated. On this graph, you're going to see the historic enrollment data starting in 1982 going all the way up to 3031. The red line is the division between actual and projected enrollments. The gray box or the gray bar at the bottom is the enrollment at the elementary schools. The dark blue band in the middle is the enrollment at the middle school and the cyan-colored band at the top is the enrollment at the high school. The total height is the total population within the district. And so if we look at the top line, sort of the total enrollment in the district, we see that we are on a downward trend over the last few years that is predicted to continue and then things will start to pick back up as we head out towards the end of the time horizon. We can look at that by school, so we see contraction at the high school, we see some contraction at the middle school that comes back up and then the elementary schools on a slow net gain. There is a small caveat to this, Massway and Moheramit populations might be slightly overpredicted, given this year's larger-than-usual kindergarten enrollment. So I'm breaking one of my cardinal rules, which is I hate presenting tabular data. I hate it, I hate it, I hate it, but you can reference it more easily than looking at a plot. So we are not going to go through every number, I hate that. But what we can say is that when we look at the elementary school, we had that slow net gain and what that equilibrates to is there is a net gain of 62 students in the 2031 school year compared to the current population. The middle school's going to have a maximum loss of about 88 students predicted in 2025 compared to current values and the high school have a maximum loss of about 163 students in 2029 compared to current. And again, those all contract and then come back out. It will point out the kindergarten numbers, though. So one of the things we do want to be slightly careful with is the Moheramit-Massway populations may end up being slightly overpredicted based on this year's kindergarten enrollment being slightly larger. So this year we have 128 kindergarteners. Due to that two-year autoregressive, auto-correlation nature of the regression, we see pops every two years of slightly higher numbers and lower numbers in the years between and that's due to last year's kindergarten being smaller than normal. That trend's also observable in first grade, but it's less, a less pronounced trend, but it is also within, these numbers aren't very far out, they're also within the scatter of historical data for kindergarten and first grade. We do try to put some bounds on our predictions and so we've looked at some of the historical predictions compared to actual enrollments. And what we found is that our average error varies from about 1.6% for a one-year prediction to about 12 and 1/2% at year 10. And so when we look out at year 10, that's what this plot is showing us, the enrollment is in the dark blue, minus 12, or minus the error is shown in the triangles in the cyan color and plus the error is shown in the blue circles. At year 10, that total variation from the triangles to the circles is 502 students over the entire district. And so that's the bounds and the predictions over 10 years and as you would expect, the farther you get out, the bigger the year becomes. All right, so these are for your reference.
Can I ask you a quick question about that last line?
Yes.
So does this mean if we looked back over the historical period, half of the 10-year predictions were off by more than 12 and 1/2%?
Yeah, I don't love average error for this calculation. It could be a little bit more robust and that's something we're going to look at, but yes, on, it's, you got plus or minus when on an average error calculation that comes down, so it could be larger, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so when you come back to look at this, Massway K through 4 and its total is in the blue columns, Moheramit K through 4 and that's total is in the cyan columns and the green column is the total elementary population. Middle school, it's pretty straightforward. And then finally, high school. We calculate high school populations three ways. We calculate it as the total population, which is in the dark blue columns, 9 through 12 and then its total. We calculate it with the in-district students only, so that's the without tuition in the cyan columns in the middle, and then we show the tuition-only students on the right-hand side in the blue columns. And so you're going to see some patterns with the tuition students that I will point out here. So if you look at this year in 10th grade, we have 51 tuition students. We are going to track that until they're out of the system, so the grade progression ratio will be used on that value, so you'll see them next year in 11th grade at 50 tuition students and the year after as seniors as 51 tuition students. Once that is, the existing population has been marched out of the predictions, we go back to assuming that the total tuition students in ninth grade will be 40 and then we march that forward with the grade progression ratio. So that's why when you look at the rest of the columns, they look identical. And this just shows that visually, so the dark blue line is the total population, the cyan line is the population without the tuition students and the gap between the two are the tuition students. That gap is constant outside of the next three years because we have the same assumption for freshman year tuition students. All right, so in summary, the total district pop enrollment is predicted to decrease by 130 students at maximum in year 2029 compared to its current enrollment. Massway and Moheramit will both gain at maximum 62 students. Middle school will have a maximum loss of 88 students and the high school have a maximum loss of 163 students compared to the current cohorts. We do have a caveat about the Massway and Moheramit numbers being slightly larger based on their current kindergarten cohort being slightly larger. However, the more recent birth data is increasing within the district. When we compare to this class of current kindergarteners, there are in fact 20 more births this past year compared to the year when those kindergarteners were born. And so that potential overprediction may actually be matched by increased births within the district. All right, so some notes, things that we can't put in the model but may drive some change. With the new middle school opening, we may see more students choosing to come back from private schools. We don't know how the pandemic is going to continue to roll out. Students that were lost as a result of the pandemic may filter back over time, whether that's homeschooling or going to private school and that's going to increase our enrollment. And then finally, if the voucher bill passes, that may have an effect on enrollment as well. All right, I've now wowed you with my numbers, ask all your questions.
Heather, in terms of the live births, do you have the historical record of the live births over the projection period?
On me?
No, just in terms of.
Yes, we have.
We used to be able to see that in a chart.
Yes, yes. In fact, I do have them, it's over there. Yeah, we have births, we used births from 1984 forward for these regressions and we have them further back than that.
Great, thank you.
Your, your certainty on this really only goes out about five years because then you're.
We're making up births.
Yeah.
We're estimating, we're doing what every statistics professor I ever had said, we are extrapolating.
As I learned in my quantitative analysis classes.
Friends don't let friends extrapolate was what my, the thing that stuck in my head.
Is there a margin of error you're figuring on those first five years as far as how, what the variance could be?
So that gets a little bit, when you're talking about estimating the high school population out 10 years, that gets to be, and we haven't done the specific grade level, that's a lot of data to crunch. Those kids actually exist, right? They're sitting in second grade classrooms right now and 10 years they're going to be seniors. Our kindergarteners right now in 10 years will be 10th graders. So those, the high school population on that side of the conversation is going to be much better bounded than the elementary school estimates.
Do you figure at all any new building projects going on in the towns to bring in families that would increase enrollment? Because you always, you know, our, our amount of housing isn't always finite, but I know Lee in the last couple of years has built a lot of housing.
Yeah, and then Riverwoods opened and there was a lot of turnover and a lot of different neighborhoods of some of the more senior folks moving. We've looked historically at trying to add housing starts or building permits or, there's really nothing it's going to correlate to because when folks move into the district or when new houses are built, we don't know where, you know, we could estimate maybe that a family is coming in and that's not necessarily the case. My next door neighbor was an elderly lady who moved to Rhode Island and I got a 50-something year old single guy who moved in, so, you know, no family. So there's nothing it's going to correlate to that we could guess they're going to come into the district, but we don't know where. And the only way we would have to predict that would be the regression in kindergarten or first grade and that would assume that those people, those houses that turned over would have kindergarteners or first graders coming in this year, which doesn't correlate.
Okay, thank you.
I keep trying to think of why we have the alternate year effect in an elementary, in kindergarten starts. Could we look at the distribution of siblings in our enrollment data anonymously, of course, to see if there is a pattern where that's the most common interval between siblings in the district to understand?
I would love for you to do that, Michael.
When you're modeling, it's nice to have the empirical data, but there should be a mechanism behind it and we should, you know, we have this lack of understanding of what the mechanism is.
Yes. The data is, is much more tightly grouped in the, in the minus two population, but we don't have correlation and causation not being the same thing, we don't have causation. But we, you know, we don't have access to that level of data. We have asked in some of our, I think last year we asked to see, when we do enrollment, there was a question in Power School about kids in the house and how old they were, but I don't think there was a reliable way for us to get that data either.
Volunteer, it was voluntary.
It was a voluntary question. So we get, we get population, census numbers, we don't get that granularity.
Yeah, okay.
I wanted to thank you for this, the, all the work that's gone into it and the care that you took in presenting it in a way that is understandable, digestible, actionable. I know that the Long Range Planning Committee has existed for a number of years and had, had ebbs and flows, ups and downs. I'm curious about how, whether each well-functioning district has a similar committee, if there's similarities or differences between how different districts calculate. similarities or differences between how different districts calculate, and sort of what you've done to learn from best practices of how other districts are estimating and predicting their enrollment.
So I don't have that institutional knowledge personally.
I do. And it's, they're largely using a enrollment projection provided by NASDAQ across New England. And the difference that we're getting here from the Long Range Planning Committee is the customization of the K1 data in particular. When we looked at the NASDAQ data and Denise and I looked at it and I presented it to the board, it just wasn't as, it wasn't as specific to Oyster River. They just, they count the live births, they project the progression ratios and they let that go. And it's just kind of like boilerplate. What we get from the Long Range Planning Committee is much more useful to the district in the, and especially in the immediate sense, going back to Brian's question. The closer we are to the year we're in, the better this data is to use. When we're talking about class sizes, for example, for next year, this is invaluable. Talk about class sizes seven years out, it's just a hint of what could possibly be there.
And the Long Range Planning Committee, it was really interesting because a question came up, well, how, you know, how far back does it go? And, you know, David Taylor was like, well, let's see, I came on in 77. I mean, it really is. I mean, it's decades. This committee has been in place for decades, and it is a unique, really is a unique committee, I believe.
It is.
And it was, you know, it was, my understanding, it was a citizen petition at, well, it wasn't deliberate accession back then because it wasn't that format. It was a school meeting, the old time school meeting. But that's, that's how the committee came into being. And there really are decades of data. It's pretty incredible. And I'm not sure, Brian, if what you were, if you were, what you were asking, I may have misunderstood, but we definitely have all the data as far as how accurate the predictions have been, like grade to grade to grade, like, again, like decades worth. So, I mean, there's certainly a lot more statistical data there. I'm not sure how useful, you know, it would be for our purposes, but, you know, for anyone that has an interest, it's definitely there.
Definitely valuable. I just, there's actually a lot of, usually there's a lot of districts out there, believe it or not, that do not have any long-range planning. They just finger in the wind, whatever shows up on day one. Because there are a lot of districts that are very transient. They have people moving in and out. I mean, a district I work in, people moving in and out all the time. So it's very difficult to manage that, and they don't use any long-range planning, much to my chagrin, but, you know, doesn't, usually comes in handy for budgeting as well. And that's why I like to use it.
And I think the committee looked at the NASDAQ numbers compared with Long Range, our committee's numbers. And there are some dynamics with our community, especially around the K1 split and the bump that we see going into middle school that didn't match the model that NASDAQ uses, basically.
And I think, and I think what we discussed it last year is because I remember my years in the finance industry where it's because that's when parents are starting to move into the district because that's their higher income years that they can afford to move into the district because they want to move here for the, for the quality of the school district. So that's, and those years kind of coincided with the middle school years of a kid, I think. I mean, it's anecdotal, but I mean, it's, it makes some sense.
Historical fact, but what I'm looking, I was thinking about that, Brian, when Heather was doing her presentations, I don't see that bump that we've seen in the past where we.
Yeah, I didn't this year, but I think we did last year, though.
Yes.
Yeah, this year I didn't see that bump.
We have periodically, Heather, we have this all of a sudden, where did these kids come from kind of situation. Sometimes it's been at the elementary, sometimes it's been at the middle school, and sometimes it's been at the high school. And it always catches us off guard because, you know, the model doesn't project it that, you know, a host of families are going to just move in at one level. And you would think it would distribute across all 13 grades, but it just magically pops in one spot, which, you know, causes us all to go, do we have a staffing to, you know, address it late in the summer or so?
So I want to acknowledge that I asked a bunch of questions by email to Heather ahead of this, getting at the underlying statistics, so I didn't have to ask them here tonight in front of all of you. So thank you for taking, I know that there was a bunch of time that you spent to answer my questions, and I really appreciate that.
Yes, I'm going to volunteer you to join us on the Long Range Planning Committee if I have any more. You'd be voluntold.
Tom. Thank you, Heather. Presentation reminds me of being in math class, and I was, but you did a good job taking us along. My question isn't really actually for you, Heather, but it's a thought, and since my last meeting, I'm going to just put something out there. Because I was wondering, when I toured the middle school, whether people might be interested in tuitioning kids into the middle school, whether it'd be attractive to some people to tuition kids into the middle school. And the concern was, you know, numbers. I mean, do you want to bring, you know, bring in more people? Can the school handle an increased number? You know, and you maybe have 10, might maybe 10, if you brought tuition 10 in, and those 10 might go into, at least have the option of going on to the high school, so maybe a total of 20 that you might bring in. And that, that would be a fair amount of money to bring into the district. Your numbers would indicate that we could do that and still maintain the, have the space because the, because you're, because the enrollment numbers are going to go down. So I just sort of throw that out, whether that's a possibility, something to think about down the road.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Tom.
Denise?
I think the other thing that's unique is, is to try and determine that Mohairamet, Massway split, which is something that NASDAQ does not do as far as this split goes. And, you know, and we're going to be looking at the actual kindergarten registrations shortly, just in a few minutes, I guess. But I know that Dr. Morris, many years ago, you know, talked about this idea of Mohairamet and Massway, and maybe we should look at, you know, like having a K2 and a 3, 4, whatever. And that obviously was not at all a very popular idea at the time. And I've often said, and I still believe it's true, it was the right solution at the wrong time. You know, it wasn't the right time, but it is constantly a challenge to balance because you never know where they're going to move into. So when you look at the predictions in terms of the total number, except with the pandemic was screwy and that kind of messed things up. But in general, the predictions have been really right on. But the problem has always been the split between Mohairamet and Massway. And then you start messing with, okay, this child really lives in the Massway district, but we're going to ship them to Mohairamet because there's more room there. Well, that's going to throw everything off in terms of the model because now you've got children that are at one school and, you know, should be at the other or whatever. And so, I mean, I know that's not happening anytime soon, but, you know, I think long-term, if we're really looking long-term, you know, it might be something at some point that we have to revisit because I do, I do think it's going to continue to present a challenge of all of a sudden having, you know, too many kindergarteners in one of the schools.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, the split we're using for the projections for the next few years don't actually match what happened this year. Massway is generally predicted to have more kindergarteners, but this year Mohairamet had way more.
Yeah, that's exactly what happens. And what it creates is an inefficiency in transportation and staff ratios.
All right. Thank you very much.
Heather, please extend our thank you to the committee as well as yourself and Denise for this. This is great to see it back, and you did a wonderful job presenting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm keeping all the thanks for myself. The committee can't have.
Okay, it's all to you. Continue?
Yes.
All right. Michael, I did, and I did not intentionally do this, and I want to make sure I read it into the record. We did have a written public comment, and I apologize. So Robin Mauer wrote to the board and asked this be read into the public record. Greetings. First, I would like to thank all of you for your service to the community. Having served as a Durham Town Councilor for six years, I can easily imagine the sacrifices you have made to honor your commitment. I am writing to alert you to a significant information gap between the ORCSD community and your non-school supporters, meaning parent, people who don't have parents who live in the district and support us, the taxpayers who do not have children in the district and are less likely to follow ORCSD matters. The demographic is large. Most of us are happy to support our schools, even as we are paying the $40 million middle school bond. We are not happy to be still in the dark when Election Day is right around the corner. Specifically, what is the information about the school board candidates? Two, can't we do a better job of learning, alerting the community to the recently held Candidate Night event? And three, why can't we access a recording of that candidate's night? The information gap is unacceptable, and it is not unique to this year. It bears repeating that an informed citizenry is more likely to be an engaged citizenry. The town of Durham's weekly Friday updates provide a free platform through which we can literally link in this demographic to an important, into important ORCSD news. Key parts of your own website are woefully outdated, and that's a separate issue from the difficulty of finding information on the website. Voters should not have to beat the bushes to find out information about school board candidates, nor should they have to use social media or rely on PTO websites or teachers. While some of us are luckily, lucky to be able to turn to trusted, informed, personal sources, this is not the option for many voters. I urge you to remedy the situation immediately and to plan for improvements. You'll be working on a strategic plan in the next few years. Certainly, a good strategic plan would be to try to keep the non-school community better informed. Thank you for taking my comments under advisement, Robin Mauer. So I think based on tonight's board meeting, there is a lot now on our website for the community to see in terms of community profiles, and I want to thank Robin for her comments. Continuing my report, I know a lot of us have done this already, but I want to take the time specifically to thank certain people in relation to the opening of the new middle school. In particular, I want to, I want to applaud Jay Richard, the principal, and Bill, his assistant principal. When we talk about closing a school and opening a school, so much effort has been put in by both of these administrators. And nights welcoming alumni beyond the school day, Saturdays welcoming alumni, evenings like last night where the parents of the children get to come in and see the school and feel the enthusiasm of their children. And tomorrow night with the 6th and 7th grade. I just, you know, when we talk about the workload of people and the transition from the old school to the new, Bill and Jay have been by my side from the beginning and have put in extraordinary hours to communicate and host and be part of a really astounding event for the district. The other person that I want to recognize tonight is Jim Razicki. So to give you a sense of his commitment, we had a school pick up 1,000 pieces of furniture. So we, our goal was to recycle as much of the old school as possible. We had another school bring in two truckloads, two tractor-trailer truckloads and moved furniture into their school systems. And, you know, if you put those on eBay, you'd get nothing for them. But by donating them to public, to other school systems, we get to feel proud of our efforts in recycling. Jim was there on Saturdays, and he was there through vacation week. And, you know, the idea that all of that stuff didn't end up in a landfill is a credit to our commitment as a district and Jim's in particular to sustainability. So Jim deserves recognition. I also want to give special recognition to the middle school counselors this evening. They, in welcoming our, our students into the new school, created an atmosphere of fun and adventure. They created games and all kinds of different ways to introduce our students to the new school and give them a sense of excitement and pride. And so our counselors at the middle school deserve incredible recognition. And finally, Michael alluded to this earlier. I just really want to bring home the fact that, you know, the board very generously allowed the middle school students three extra days of vacation during this winter break so that the middle school teachers could get their classrooms ready. And they got their classrooms ready. But I also want to share with you that when you invest time with teachers, they give it back to you many times over. And, you know, I would walk into that building during vacation and end up having conversations with teachers who are in there getting their classrooms ready. When school opened on Monday, I think it was Jay, when I was talking to him, it was the idea that these classrooms are so ready, it no longer felt like a construction project. It felt like school. And that's an amazing commitment to, by our teachers and our support staff in making this a special place for her, for our students. So kudos to everyone at the middle school, Jay, for all the hard work that they did to make Monday a special day for our students, and all the pre-work they did in getting kids oriented to that new building before they left for vacation. Just an outstanding job, and I applaud you and your staff. In terms of completing my evening report, Andy wanted to do his spring presentation. When poor Andy did all this work, we were still under a mask mandate, and he sent me an email last week, and he said, gee, you still want me to do this? And I said, Andy, you put the work in, take a few minutes, let the board know how you're going to run spring sports in this new environment. So I want to give Andy a few minutes to share.
Yeah, I don't know that I'll take too, too long. Before I started, I did want to say thank you to Al and Tom. You guys have been incredibly supportive to not only me, but all of our athletes and sports across the district. And in my time here, I've really enjoyed working with you, and we'll really miss you guys. You guys have been fantastic. So, thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention before talking about spring sports was I just wanted to congratulate all of our winter teams and our athletes and thank them for their hard work, not just on the, on the court or the ice or the slopes or in the pool or wherever they were, but just for their compliance with all the COVID stuff that we put on them. It wasn't easy, but they did a great job, and they listened, and they did everything that they were asked to do to play. So I really, I wanted to thank them. We still have a couple of teams that are playing. If anybody is interested, Friday night, the Oyster River Portsmouth Clipper Cats, girls' hockey team, the number one team seed in the state right now, is going to host Pinkerton in the quarterfinals in Dover at 5:00. And on Saturday, the number two seed boys' hockey team is going to host Merrimack in the quarterfinals at 4:00 E&amp;O. So if you're looking for something to do, come on out and cheer them on. So as Dr. Morris said, with, with the changes that the state kind of threw upon us, it altered my, our plan slightly in that I think if you see in your packets, you have a copy of it, that masks would be optional for all players and coaches and spectators, both indoors and outdoors. That really kind of aligns to what is going on in school here. We still will continue with, you know, as many mitigating measures as we can as far as athletes and water. We'll have them providing their own water so they're not sharing. We'll, we'll continue the use for the spring of the sideline chairs as opposed to the benches so that we can encourage some social distancing there. We will have masks, surgical masks or, you know, the box, the blue masks that you see everywhere on hand in case anybody wants one and forgets one, we'll have them on hand. And, you know, we just continue to encourage our kids to stay home if they're sick and not feeling well. So we, you know, through everything, we had a good winter, and I wouldn't expect anything to be different, different this spring. So with that, if there's any questions, I can get Denise?
Just is there anything that the NHIAA is, you know, doing, I mean, differently or, you know, requiring or anything like that?
No, they've pretty much gone back to business as usual.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that, you know, we, what schools have done throughout this is really worked together. And, you know, we all don't have the same protocols, but, you know, we've. And, you know, we all don't have the same protocols, but, you know, we've, you know, kind of had a gentleman's agreement between athletic directors that, you know, if we go to a school and, you know, their protocol is tougher than ours, then we follow theirs. Because it just makes it easier for everybody involved. And, you know, our coaches and athletes have been really good in understanding about that. So I would expect this spring that we really won't see a whole lot in terms of, you know, having to do anything like that. But, yeah, the NHIAA as an organization has not really made any adjustments. It's been left up to the schools.
I just want to thank you for the work you've done during the pandemic, keeping sports going, because I think that's been invaluable to the district and kids who didn't have contact with their peers, they could have contact through sports. And I think, you know, I think just what you did was so important for the district. I just want to thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom. You know, I think, you know, we were able to play from the get-go.
Yep, we were.
And that was, I think it was really important to our kids. And keeping them active was just, was a real bonus for us. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And just finally, and David may want to chime in with the latest numbers. I meant to wake him up, so that's why I said his name. We had 100 children register for kindergarten, and both of these memos are based on February 18th. These are, you know, obviously early numbers. We had 59 students enroll at Massway and 41 at Moheramit. David, have those numbers changed at all? See? Gave you something to do.
They have a little bit at Moheramit. We're at 45 now as of today. I was able to go back and look at the past four years, two of those very much complicated by the pandemic, at where we were with our numbers on March 1st and where we started in September. And again, when I've talked with Heather about this, I really, I looked to the math and the mathematicians to do it, because to me, it's just totally random. The difference between our March 1 number and our start of the school year number has been anywhere between plus 12 to plus 25 and anything in between. So I have no idea what a number on March 1st really means, honestly, because I don't know who's out there who hasn't enrolled or who's out there who has yet to move in. But at this point, we're at 45.
It's basically a foundation number that will grow.
Yep, yep. So, you know, we start to have our conversations based on that and how much leeway we have.
Thanks, David. All right. Michael, that concludes my section of the agenda.
All right. Sue, we have a, is this the administrative report?
Yes, you just have, actually, you have the February report, because I wasn't here in February, but I just want to keep it in line with what I usually do. Couple of things just of note, if you see that big balance in the teacher count, a lot of that is unencumbered salaries for stipends, and then we have a couple of positions that are vacant, being filled by a sub. People will come back, so that's a good number for me to look at and just see what's going on there. That's what I do in February, I look at these numbers and see what might not look right. In addition to that, when you look at that teacher number, because we have a number of teachers out, the sub number, we are going to see probably an overage in that account because it's already pretty high. Other than that, things look pretty good. March is the month when I really drill into the budget and see where we might be in fund balance at the end of the year. I just feel good about the budget right now, so. Questions? All good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. So the next items, Michael, you suspend it until the next meeting?
That's right, yep. So that brings us to the student representative report, Olivia.
Hi. I don't have too much for tonight because all of my topics kind of have been discussed throughout the meeting already. So I was just going to mention the debate club, which is hosting the forum tomorrow night, and then I was going to mention that the MOR article was published right before break. And then I have, and then I was going to mention the hockey games this weekend, too. All that I have left besides that is a series of fundraisers that the senior class is hosting. So the first one that we're having, which is starting tomorrow, is a sock fundraiser where you can buy a pack of three socks. They're like fun socks, they're not like boring socks. And then the money will go towards the senior class in helping plan activities and such, you know? And for every pack that is sold, a pair will be donated to the Dover Children's Home. So two good causes in one. And then that will run for 10 days, starting tomorrow, so. And then the other fundraisers that we have is the Krispy Kreme Donut One, which is going to be March 8th in front of the school, so make sure to go get your donuts. And then the last one is a mattress fundraiser, which is going to be on April 3rd, which is a little while out, but I thought I'd mention it now. And then, yeah, that's it. Any questions?
I can't wait until Election Day. Krispy Kreme donuts are awesome.
Very exciting.
All right. Next is the unanimous consent agenda. Is there any of these items that would, anybody like to discuss separately? Hearing done, I will move approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes approval of middle school maternity leave of absence from May 2nd, 2022, to the end of the school year, and from the beginning of the next school year to November 2022. And additionally, a second middle school maternity leave of absence from the beginning of this next school year to November 28th, 2022. Second, Dan. All is in favor? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. The unanimous consent agenda is approved. All right. And now, we have two items on our discussion and action items. One is the board self-evaluation, the other is a policy item. The board self-evaluation, we felt it was important, given especially that this is our last meeting with Tom and Al, to have that discussion tonight. We are required to have that, you know, to have a self-evaluation discussion on an annual basis. It is, what time is it? It's, should we take a five-minute break and then have the self-evaluation discussion?
Can I ask a question? I know last year we did this as a separate meeting. Is there a reason why we can't do that? Because it is time-consuming, so.
So we have, I guess, the reason to try to do it tonight, well, first of all, I thought the agenda would go a little bit faster than it did tonight. So blame me for that one. And then we want to try to schedule another meeting before Tom and Al are gone, which is a week out.
Nice try, Mike.
But, I mean, this is the will of the board, so is there?
So my vote would be that we should really try to do it with this board, and, you know, two new board members are probably going to abstain, having not been involved over the past year. My preference would be to get it done tonight.
Mine would as well. I don't think, last year was, you know, a unique year, and, I mean, we were in the middle of a pandemic. I tend to feel that the discussion is, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't expect that it will go as long as it did last year.
Never know. All right. Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll pick that up.
I might escape.
All right. So our last two items are self-evaluation and policies, and then our closing items. So you have in the packet a memo that I had written to the board. My suggestion is that we follow a similar pattern to last year where we had, you know, each taken up an opportunity to offer some observations and then have a brief roundtable discussion. We'll try to keep it capped at 30 minutes. I had suggested some topics to consider in your comments, of course, and I've also, you know, Wendy had included also the R document that describes some questions for us to consider, but really this is kind of open forum for us to evaluate our own work over the last year. So with that, would anybody like to start? This would be really quick if nobody's...
Wow!
Hal?
I can go. So I'll go right down what you said. Please consider the following areas of responsibility in your comments. So the first was like fiscal governance, fiscal planning, budget process, reserve funds, fund balance, capital planning, and tax impact. I thought that the budget process worked really pretty well last year. I thought there was a lot of opportunities for people to learn in advance, well, what was being asked by different departments, and I thought there was a lot of time to debate over them. So I tried to hopefully end the crunch that was there at the end. I think it'll always be there, but I think it's good. I think when we think of the budget process, let's not forget that we still have the second half. It's going to come up as you go towards September, which is where you find out where the fund balance is. And again, I would hope that we can keep that the actual use of funds was down to about half a million dollars, which would be great. The only other thing I would throw out there in terms of the budget process for the new people that are going to come on, it would be really helpful if they had a primer of what the budget process really was and how it worked through the year. So it'll give them an expectation of how things are going to unfold as the year goes along. The superintendent oversight, it sounds so sinister. Actually, I was thinking more like superintendent collaborations, and I think we've kind of touched on that some, to be mindful and efficient with our time, that we don't add 50 million committees and timeframe that cause Jim to be overstretched. I think that's something we should, you should keep in mind. Negotiations with the collective bargaining units, well, we negotiated with everybody, so that's the good news. I think one of the hallmarks in all our negotiations with our bargaining units has been a problem, not just money. It's been problem solving about how we fix things, and I think even if we aren't doing the actual negotiations, that those conversations continue. They're really, really healthy. I think that we've seen, as we've tried to move through the chaos of the changing COVID protocols from the state, that it's to our best interest to have open conversations with our teachers. I think they've been very productive. I think they've made us feel connected and were able to share ideas. Preparation for the budget hearing and the deliberative session. My only critique with that is, and I think maybe I got this from Tom, is I think every budget tells a story about what you're trying to do, and I don't think we got to tell our story really this year. To me, the story really was the expansion of the multi-tiered system and the support system and what we've been working on for multiple years to put in and how it was data-driven, and yet most of the community missed that. And I think it's really the foundation of where you guys are going forward. So again, more on the story. You can include tons of numbers, but I think the story is really helpful for the majority of our citizens. In terms of policy development and management, my only thing with that is I thought it was helpful in the past that when we looked in our packet, that we got kind of your, if you can give us kind of a rundown of what the deliberation was on the policy before it comes to us, it helps. I mean, we look at the crossouts that you put on there, but we haven't really seen the conversation, so it's helpful, I think, for the other board members to get to see that, and I think that stimulates better conversation. And I mean, overall, I think we did a pretty good job. It was a chaotic year. I think everybody was really respectful. We brought a bunch of, you know, ideas forward, and everybody got a chance to pitch it, and I think that that was a really, really positive thing. I think you guys were in an amazingly good position going forward in terms of you're coming out of COVID, you've implemented a lot of things. The only other difference I would make is that last year, we really didn't do goals till the fall. We didn't really know where we were because we were still trying to figure out COVID. I think it's different this year. I think that you have an opportunity now, coming in the spring before things get crazy and before you go trucking off for the summer, to really think about what your goals are. I think a lot of them are not necessarily monetary, monetary things, that you're adding things. I think it's already been brought up, and I've seen people talk about it, about the middle school competency grading and the whole competency grading system as a whole is kind of a foundation of the strategic plan, and I think that's a broader conversation, which you can do as a goal that doesn't necessarily mean money. I think the other one, which may be a longer-term discussion or a goal, is about the scheduling of the elementary schools. How does that look? And then what would foreign language look like if you had an expansion of time? You may not, and I don't think you'll be ready financially to do it in the fall, but at least you'll get the conversation going for what I think is a more lengthy conversation, particularly since you're doing a scheduling change, and I think that is it for me.
Brian?
I agree with pretty much everything Al said. The only thing I would probably suggest is, because we're losing a valuable member of the Finance Committee and we have two new members, maybe it's, we should have a Finance Committee meeting soon after the election to bring, go over the process and how the budget works and, you know, meet with them or the new person, who knows, one of the new people may be on the Finance Committee, who knows? But I think that's important because it's, one of the more challenging things on this board is to do a budget. And I mean, I know I do my budgeting differently than Sue does. I mean, I look at it from, through a function code where I know they give it to us by location, and it's just, you know, I have to kind of put a different hat on it and go through that. I tend to look at it through general ed, special ed, you know, operations, you know, maintenance, things like that. But I think that's important because I think it's the hardest, it's hardest part of the job to wrap your head around is budgeting. And the rules, it's more, probably not as much the numbers as much as it is the process and how it, although legalese, it has to go through it, you know, because we are a public entity, we have a lot more regulations. So the other part I would say is, you know, I think we as a board have to be cognizant of what we request of the administrative team, only because I think we put a lot on their shoulders, and they have a district to run. And I know from working in a district, they're extremely busy, and I don't, there are certain things I think that we can do ourselves that we should not be putting on the shoulders of Jim and his staff because it just is not an efficient way to run a district. And I think we've done, especially with COVID and everything else, they were already stretched well beyond capacity, and they were successful in doing so, but I think it's just not a sustainable model that we can do and keep the stress level to a reasonable level and keep the valuable staff that we have. I think negotiations, we're actually in a pretty good spot, considering, I think we've set ourselves up for the next several years with all the negotiations and hours we spent negotiating this year. That's kind of a relief to get off the table. I think the process went well because I think there's already been an established relationship between the bargaining units and management, and it flowed much easier. I mean, any umps we had were very easily handled or dealt with. And I think that pretty much narrows down what I have, but I do agree on the deliberative session as far as telling the story. You know, we didn't really get that, but we also didn't get a lot of financial questions on it, so it's, you know, I'll, if I'm lucky enough to do that article again next year, I'll have to remember that because that is actually is very valuable advice, so.
So one of the reasons I listed budget hearing and deliberative session together is that I think that we should consider next year having the board own the budget hearing as well instead of superintendent or the business administrator. It's the same budget essentially that we bring into the deliberative session, and well, a couple of years out, we'll be having new personalities in both of those roles. And really, it's, I think it's the board's story to tell in that context.
Yeah.
So something, and a lot of it would be in terms of preparation, a lot of it would be recycled content between the budget hearing and the deliberative session anyway. So that's one thought. I think our goal-setting process was on my list as well. We did not set goals in the, before the beginning of the fiscal year like we have typically done. A lot of that was, our goal was to get, our goal was to get school open and as many kids in school as possible. And beyond that, we didn't start out the year with a whole lot else that we were really, really driving towards. I think we succeeded on that measure, and now it's time to turn our focus on to the other things that are out there, and I hope that we'll do that goal-setting process earlier this year. Some of those things take, those longer-term things that are tied to the strategic plan take years to find our center and build consensus on, and so we've lost momentum there that we need to prioritize and begin again in some cases. You know, some of the things that Al and Brian have mentioned, world language, competency-based grading are part of that, and there's others out of the strategic plan as well. I appreciate the board's support and Dr. Morse's support in trying out the 360 process this year. I think that's something we should continue in the future with superintendent evaluations. With regards to negotiations, I agree that we ended up in a very good place. We had excellent committee work there. I don't think that we as a board provided a lot of direction to the negotiations committee this year, and maybe we didn't need to this year, and, but that's something that should not be by accident. I think we need to think a little bit more deeply about what input we provide to negotiations in future, future years. And then finally, our communication is still a gap. That work has kind of, that's another area where we've kind of gotten backburnered a little bit by other things and an area that we really need to pick up and make some, decide how we're going to make that investment in improving district communications, district-level communications, and board communications. Denise?
I'll go ahead. Well, unless I don't, if you want to go next.
Oh, sure. Yeah. So, yeah, I think everything that you've said, everyone's said so far resonates with me. I want to mention that I think, as Brian mentioned earlier, doing, last year, we really needed to do a separate workshop-type self-evaluation, and I think we did some really powerful self-reflection, and I think we came away with a lot of specificity around realizing that as a board, we could do a much better job clarifying, in particular to the administration, what we needed from them, what we wanted them to do. I think there was a lot of uncertainty last year around roles and responsibilities, who was going to create and decide what. This year, I've been really, really pleased to see that, you know, we've really reestablished clarity in those roles and responsibilities, and I think we've functioned a great deal better because of it. A lot of it goes to the personalities, both in the administration and the board, but I think we've, we've improved things dramatically in a relatively short time. I'm really pleased about that. With that said, I think we have a lot of things, as has already been mentioned, that have been sort of backburnered. We have to pay very close attention to workloads and not, and not just workloads, but doing things right as opposed to trying to force everything at once, because, you know, part of that is continuing to catch up with the goals that we'd set with strategic planning a while back, so. But yes, I concur with everything that's been said so far, and, you know, I think we've, I think we find ourselves in a much better place this year, certainly, than we were last year at the same time.
Denise?
Yeah, I completely agree. I, you know, I feel like, I do feel like it was very worthwhile to have a separate workshop to do self-evaluation last year, and I think that, you know, we did come away with sort of a better understanding of, you know, where some of the missteps were and where we needed to be. And I look at this year and I think, you know, we've really accomplished a lot. I think communication has greatly improved among, you know, particularly in terms of, you know, our subcommittees, you know, like with the Finance Committee and hopefully, you know, Policy Committee and just different, you know, just being able to communicate better among ourselves. And, you know, I think that there's been a lot of effort to, and it's always a challenge in terms of communicating to the community, and I think that's ongoing, that we need to continue. Certainly, you know, we sort of saw deliberative sessions, something, you know, come out of left field, which we didn't, I know for myself anyway, I certainly did not see coming, and, you know, I think we need to look at, and maybe it has something to do with what Michael was suggesting in terms of the budget workshop, but, you know, so that we don't have that kind of surprise come up at deliberative session, you know? And of course, there's only so much we can control, but I do think communication is always something that we need to have on our radar. But I just think we did really well. I think, again, under some challenging conditions, but we accomplished a lot. Middle schools open and schools are functioning, so I do think we need to look at setting our board goals earlier as well.
Anybody else? Tom?
So I agree with almost everything that people have said, so I won't, I won't just repeat that, or maybe repeat it a little bit. I think that a year ago, there was some ambiguity about leadership and roles, and I think we got out of, I think we got out of whack on that, and I feel that we have, that's been resolved, and I think that we're in a much better situation in terms of the leadership of the superintendent and the role of the board in relationship to the superintendent. In connection to the communications, I think that we've known for a long, long time that we need to fix the website, right? And I think we should just start, you know, I mean, it's up to you, but I think to start, start in on that. I mean, there are other things down the road, questions, but I mean, I think, I think that's a pretty clear thing that we need to start doing, just even given the confusion about the candidates tonight and stuff like that. I mean, I think that, I think that's a pretty present issue. I think that, maybe going back to my first point, I think Michael, I think you've done a wonderful job as chair, you know, in terms of organizing, and I think you made some changes. I think that you're, I was a little skeptical of the 360 evaluation of the superintendent, but I think that really worked well, and I think, you know, you stuck with that, and I think you made that work, and I think that'll be a good tool down the road. I like the changes, changes in the agenda. And I think in terms of budgeting, one thing I think the Finance Committee needs to watch, and I'm not saying you didn't watch it, is sometimes I think things get deliberated and talked through, and as a board member, sometimes I have to scramble to unpack some of the logic of what you've done. And I think you've, you worked really hard to do that, but I think that's a perennial thing. And for me, I was like terrified with the $900,000 out of the reserve funds, and you folks said, well, that's just the worst-case scenario, and it, and he says, because we're going to, you know, and it seemed to me nebulous right up almost to the end when Sue said, well, I guess there's a holiday on certain health issues, but it took, I had to scramble to kind of get my head around that. So I think, and that's just something I think you're always going to have to watch so that for those, you don't have an insider-outsider situation. And I'm not saying you did, but I'm just saying it's like something you really have to look at. But I think, you know, the boards, we're in much better shape. I think we have good leadership. We have a good relationship in terms of roles with the superintendent. I think, I think that we're, compared to where we were last year, we're in a lot better space.
This is my, I actually have a year to, to look back on in contrast to last year when we had this conversation. I too wanted to thank Michael as chair, filling Tom's big shoes and working with Denise and Dr. Morse to guide us. I think you've done an excellent job, and I'm looking forward to continuing. I've really grown to appreciate all of you and the three hats that we all wear. One hand representing our constituents, and, you know, the second hat being what we value and hold important as, you know, presumably reasons that we were voted in. But that third hat of board function and unity around the health of the district, you know, 7-0 vote to approve the budget, and other times where through discussion, we've, we've put sort of the, the board and the district above perhaps those other two hats. I think that is really testament to, to how this board works. I personally really trusted the committees that were, that were working, the Finance Committee negotiations, policy, long-range planning, the School Board Association collection there, and I think that there, one of the things, for example, for negotiations, we were able to talk about our values in going into it, and so, for example, lifting up the lower-paid staff in our district out of necessity, but also because it's the right thing to do. I felt that that was brought with fidelity into negotiations, and that made me really glad. There are two thorny issues that still trying to figure out, and I think that the board could do well to look at, so related to what others have said. The, the first is the idea of what we can do ourselves to take the load off administration. How do we put the resources in the right place and the right time of not only ourselves and the staff that work for the district, but also our community volunteers? And are there ways, like we've done with the DEIJ committee and others, to bring in community volunteers who have the time and expertise and not put more weight or onus on administration to manage that? Can we as board members kind of be that facilitated link? And the second authority issue is the communication, where it's not just a goal, but it's a mentality and a mindset that I don't feel we as a board also are at quite yet, and I'm not sure what to do about it because of all the restrictions on, you know, whether we can speak for the board and if we can communicate with each other. And so I bring this back to some of the bigger, bolder decisions that we have to make and hearing from the community, it's like it's two-way, and helping the community know what that process is, what that arc of the longer-term decision-making is, so that we can feel that we are making progress towards these big issues, even if it's not something that we can address with the immediacy. And I think that would reduce stress on administration and us as well if we were able to, to, to communicate how we were moving forward strategically towards some of the bigger questions.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I think that was everybody, right? Yeah. So just, just from my notes, the themes that I heard coming up the most, I think, are prioritization and sensitivity to the burden that we place on the administration in terms of asking for things that are beyond, you know, essentially beyond what was already in the plan. A more robust approach to goal-setting next year, kind of a return to what we've done in the past. Continue to revisit the strategic plan, and that kind of goes in with the priorities and goal-setting as well. And emphasis on actually making some progress on communication. Tom, thank you for calling out specifically the website. I think that's worthwhile to, you know, that may be the right place to start. Other, other themes or comments that want to pull out or discuss in more detail? All right. All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for your reflection. We have one policy for first read tonight. Denise, do you want to take us through that one?
Yes. So the change in this policy, which if I can put my hands on it, here we go, the hiring is hiring of coaches, policy GEA. The big change is taking the decision-making from the school board and putting it, you know, on the superintendent. So in other words, we're not, no longer going to approve the hiring of coaches. We are going to be notified of the hiring of coaches. So we'll still get the information in terms of who the coaches are, who have been hired. But that decision will no longer rest with the board. And this is something that, you know, had been discussed for quite some time. We kind of went back and forth. And so really, that's, that's the big, the big change in this. I do have the paragraph that starts continuation and dismissal. I do believe that the sentence is not exactly what we had suggested in our Policy Committee. It currently says the superintendent will make the recommendation for reappointment, and if approved, will forward to the school board for informational purposes only. That's true. But it's like, it's the superintendent that's approving. So it's, I think what we were trying to say, the superintendent--
Will approve the recommendation.
Yes. Well, the superintendent, but we wanted to say, because he doesn't necessarily, will review and have, I don't know what we're, I wrote down review, and if approved by the superintendent--
That's right.
--will be forwarded to the school board. So that's what I think it should say. So it would say, let me read it from the top. So you've got the sentence before that, "The athletic director and principal will make reappointment proposals for the following season. The superintendent will review the recommendations and if approved by the superintendent, will be forwarded to the school board for informational purposes only." I think that's a little clearer if we put it that way. Does anyone else have any?
I'd just add one quick thing. In, in making the motion to send this to policy for revision, one of my chief objectives was to sort of streamline the process, right? That, you know, the coaches, the role of the coach as allowed by the NHIAA rules actually begins well before their seasons start. And so this affords, this change affords a, well, sort of a closure, a finalization of the final approval process by removing the boards, the need for the board to approve. It gets these coaches formally appointed sooner so that they can begin thinking and preparing for their upcoming pre-seasons and regular seasons. And it's just one thing I think we owe them, is that, that, that final approval earlier than we've been doing. And I think this accomplishes that.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So I will make a motion to approve policy GEA hiring of coaches for first read.
We have a motion. Second from Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor. GEA is approved for first read. Any other committee updates?
Michael? Oh, yes. The sabbatical committee met between, since the last meeting. And I think that there is some, there may need to be some alteration in terms of the rubric and the way it's being presented to the teachers. In my view, the sabbatical is primarily for the reinvigoration and development of the individual teacher, which leads to improved instruction and that helps the district. But I think that now there's a feeling that to get a sabbatical, you have to make a programmatic commitment to really change something far bigger than your own classroom or your own instruction. So I think that needs to be clarified in terms of what the sabbatical is for and how the sabbatical proposals are going to be evaluated. Because I think now there's a feeling like in four months, you're going to do this investigation and you're going to transform something bigger in the district, which I think maybe is just a huge load to ask of a teacher. And really, it's not, in my view, the intent of the sabbatical. So, but, you know, that's up to, obviously, folks to look at. But I think that needs to be looked at.
All right. Thank you. Other, you see?
The DEIJ committee met on Monday. We, I've mentioned before, we alternate in these tri-weekly meetings between one focused on more strategy and sort of shorter-term actions and with learning and reflection sessions. This one was really interesting, facilitated by Shannon Brown and prepared by some of the, the teacher and community member on the, on the committee. It looked at real-life situations that a teacher might find themselves in. So we were able to get to two scenarios. One was a third-grade teacher on the anniversary of September 11th in circle time. What would happen if a student brought up that, you know, I heard of a lot of people died today? How would that teacher respond while centering to EIJ principals and thinking about sort of the inclusiveness of those who are in the room and others that might be affected by that conversation? The second one was at the middle school level, if a parent wrote in with objection to a particular book that was being read. And how could a teacher respond? How could administration be engaged most effectively there? So we continue to, to really value those opportunities to learn from each other.
Brian?
Middle School Construction Committee continues to meet. We have, starting our punch list of things that are needed for the new middle school, but now comes the big change of knocking down the old school. So it's going to get loud. It's going to get, the excavators are now coming on that are rather large, that are going to be taking this building down. Last week, the, last week or the week before, the term fire department came in and did some training during vacation week. So they really did a lot of damage. That's amazing what a fire department can do in a short period of time. They'd sawed holes and, I mean, it was great training for them. But it looked like a Tasmanian devil went through the whole building and just destroyed everything. Because it was, I mean, we walked through it, but I forget what day it was. It was after our meeting on Tuesday. And all the ceiling tiles are out, you know, there's all types of stuff being, there's chairs getting thrown out, windows, I mean, it's really a--
Asbestos abatement.
Yeah, asbestos abatement. There's still a lot of activity going on. It's just going to look different. And I think it's going to be tough to keep the kids focused when that really starts to come down. But, but it is still, just, you know, the project really isn't completed until August. So, I mean, even though, that's why we're having our grand opening in August versus now, because once that field and more parking comes in and we've just determined we need a stop sign here, some other signs here, I mean, that's the, that's the stuff we're all learning now that we're, that the buildings open up, little, little stuff that we didn't notice until now.
The contractor described it as going from the construction phase to the destruction phase. And that site now is prohibited. So no one can go into the building, including myself, without being escorted by the contractor. So Brian and I went in with the contractor just to see the beginning demolition. And it was amazing what they accomplished just since the kids have been in the new building. So for the next several weeks, it'll just be involved in what they can take out of the building now without tearing it down and any asbestos abatement that's still in the building, because it has to be abated before the building can be torn down. So it'll be, I think, a couple more weeks before we actually see the exterior of the building starting to come down.
They still got to disconnect the power and the gas and all that stuff. But it was interesting, it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we had a charter, a brand-new charter school come in and got real large amount of--
It got the thousand pieces of furniture.
Yeah, the thousand pieces just to start their school. So, you know, it was, it was not worth much to us, but it's gold to somebody else. So it went to a good use and this charter school was beyond excited that they could--
It was a public, public school charter as well.
Yeah.
And Rochester school system was incredibly appreciative.
That's just Farmington for a generator.
Well, you know, Farmington.
All right. Any other committee updates? Before we, before we go to public comment, we do have the superintendent contract on here as a non-public item at the end. But I wanted to ask the board if anybody is going to request a non-public session for that. I don't know that we necessarily need to. You have the memo in the packet. If not, we can take that up right now. Okay. Should we do that? Is there a motion on the superintendent's contract?
Mike?
Brian?
Make a motion to request a 5% increase for '22-'23 for the superintendent and a 4% increase for '23-'24. For year '22-'23, it'd be 192, 651. '23-'24, it'd be 200, 357.
So we have a motion from--
Second?
We have a motion from Brian and a second from Tom. Any discussion?
There were some other aspects in the, in the memo. Do we need to include those or are we simply approving the salary currently?
Approved as, as, I guess, written.
Sorry, say that again, Brian?
It is long. So, all right, want me to read the whole thing or, I mean, I'm fine with--
I would, I guess, make a friendly amendment--
You should read it in the public record.
--to max out the number of days of vacation time to be pod out at the end of this school year as a 30-day maximum.
I will amend my motion to additionally add 30 days of vacation time to be bought out at the end of the '23-'24 school year at the per diem rate.
And this is a maximum because Dr. Morse, like many, has not been able to take full advantage of vacation time. And so this would be a, sort of a fiscally responsible way to, to cap that, that he has recommended to us. Thank you.
And this is in line with what we have done for other, other groups this year as well. This is not out of line with what--
Other administrators as well.
Yep. All right. Further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor. Superintendent's contract is approved. All right. Public comments. Anybody would like to speak a public comment tonight? Before you go, can I have a show of hands who does want to speak a public comment tonight? Two? All right. Thanks. We'll do three minutes apiece.
Hey, I'm Dean Rubine. I used to be here a lot. I'm from the--
It's gonna be this, Judy.
I'm math counts coach. And we just had the chapter, the CCOE's chapter competition. This is middle school math, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So we have a couple of fifth graders, too. And we're sending seven kids to the state competition, which is at the end of this month, I think, the 31st. Go team! As a special treat to open the new middle school, I taught my kids calculus on the first day, including integration using this little visual aid, which is the way Archimedes calculated the area of a parabola by weighing it against a triangle. This will actually balance if you do it right. All right. I'm really, I came out here to say goodbye to Al and Tom, not goodbye, but goodbye from the board. We kind of started this journey together 10 years ago, trying to save the district, save the world, or at least our little corner of it. And I think you guys really did it. So thanks for that. It's been great. I'll mention my blog, because we're talking about communication and it's kind of relevant. The name of the blog is ORCSD Clean Slate. And it was named 10 years ago. The board was bad and we needed to get a new slate of guys, which included Al and Tom. And so if anybody wants to look at the history of the board or current events, I try to As for the Long-Term Planning Committee, I'll make the same remark I usually made to Lisa Allison, which is they are measuring the mean absolute deviation error, which as Michael pointed out, has a 50% chance of being under the observed error. The usual standard for these sorts of things, when you're predicting, is to give a two-standard deviation error bar, which would basically two and a half times larger than the number we got. And that would typically give you 95% confidence that you would land in that range. Okay, enough statistics. I'm going to take off my mask for this last part because of freedom. And I'm not going to ask you guys to beat me, but I'm going to ask Al and Tom to hug me.
Thank you, Mr. Rubine. Mr. Keller?
Yeah, so I have a comment about the long-range planning. One of my very first conversations with the superintendent back in 2013, I'd moved back to the district. I had grave concerns about tuitioning and it involved the long-range planning. I was one of the people who raised up the fact that at the same time that we had these numbers, Newmarket was showing that their projections were flat. I also brought up the fact that empirical data at the time showed that our numbers were not decreasing. However, I was ignored. You can go back and watch the June 2013, June 4, 2013 YouTube video, and you will watch Dr. Morse literally go, "Projections, projections, projections." Surprise, surprise, guess what? The data that was there was ignored. He also chose to take single-point data. He only looked at, at the birth rate. He used anchor words like, "Let me cement this for you. Let me give you the facts," while discounting everything else. Imagine if we had actually looked at the data at the time and said, hey, what if it, what if it goes the other way? They never considered the case scenario of what if this isn't true? What if, which is what happened in 2000 or 2008. It was economic factor that caused the huge drop. And so here we are. What if, what if we had never taken tuition to begin with? We wouldn't be in a lawsuit and litigation back and forth with Barrington, because they're not really a true partner. The tuition, it was supposed to be a big savior. It's not the deal it was supposed to be. It was never about efficiency. That was a lie. Because we've not changed in the high school one bit of teacher-student ratio. Hasn't changed. So that was a lie about efficiency. It was intellectual dishonesty. And then we add in the fact that if we've done so great with tuition, and Tom Newkirk, of all people, is the biggest advocate for taking money, pre-taxing like Robin Hood, taking it from us in advance and then using the big slush fund to end around voters. So I personally, you know, hate to say this and ruin your parade, I can't wait to see you no longer behind this table. You have done a disservice to this board and to taxpayers. And I don't think anybody holistically looked at this.
I think it's a point of honor. Attacking a person on the board, that's unacceptable.
It's just the facts. The data wasn't used. It was omitted. You can go back and look at the video. Look at what was promised, what was delivered. And it was never considered, what if, what if it didn't drop? You used worst of the worst-case numbers and you didn't actually, you didn't actually evaluate the scenario. When you do a what-if, you look at all the scenarios. You didn't. You cherry-picked. You used one variable and guess what? Your projections were wrong, just like they're going to be again. Interest rates are going to go up. Housing will pop. You know, there's a lot of inflationary pressures going on. You know, it, all it takes is the right combination and the economy blows up. And guess what? All your long-range planning data is going to go right out the window. So there's no economic factor in any of this. So I would really discourage anybody from hanging their hat on those numbers, because you did it before and you were wrong.
Closing actions. We have got our, our next meetings on, listed here. The April 6 meeting is located to be determined.
Yes, we're still working on that.
I'm going to ask that, let's see, the Manifest Committee right now is, is that Denise and Dan?
Yeah, so we'll continue.
Can you continue for one more?
Yeah.
Because we will not have established new committees yet by that point in time.
Right, that's fine.
Right, all right. Very good. Any other, let's see, I think that's it. Motion to adjourn? Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? You see, all in favor? Seven in favor, we adjourn.